With a roll call of members, District One.
Jason Wienerman, District One.
All right, thank you, Jason. Sean?
Sean Blackburn, District Two.
All right, representing District Three is myself, Jason Crone. District Four?
I'm Ken Mossman from District Four.
All right, thank you, Ken. And then District Five?
Mike Perle, District Five.
All right. At Large, Rich Blankish is not present tonight, and then our other At Large member, Jeff Bertram?
Here.
All right, very good. And then our county commissioning representative at tonight's meeting, Joe Persky is with us. Thank you, Joe. All right. Agenda item number one, to consider a conditional use permit request for a major shoreline alteration submitted by Lee Monte Brewer, Shakopee, Minnesota, according to Section 10.2.14D of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, for topographic alteration of more than 100 cubic yards within twice the building setback. Property under consideration is 7.6 acres located in the southeast quarter of Section 29 Wakefield Township. Property address is Fisher Road, Cold Spring, Minnesota. All right, and we have our applicants with us. All right, very good. We'll come back to you guys in a second, and we'll get started with the staff report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this item here, back this away, it's a little hot. There we go. The parcel size above the ordinary high water level is about three and a half acres. The whole property is pretty much all steep slope and bluff with loamy sand soils that are potentially highly erodible due to the slope. In terms of vegetation, pretty much the whole parcel was well vegetated. There was vegetation removal recently, which exceeded what would be allowed by a construction site permit, even with the structure there and the 20-foot buffer around that. The applicants have signed a stipulation agreement to address that, which we'll cover later in the staff report and in the conditions as well. There's no septic system on the property yet. Wolfing Lake is impaired for high nutrient levels. Just some property history, there was a conditional use permit approved in 2016 for the driveway area, which is what's being added on to in this proposal. That was done to achieve access to the property, but it didn't achieve the necessary elevation requirement. And it's also not very wide, and the applicants want to widen that driveway. In June of 2021, I had met with the property owners on site regarding an application. We received a complete application in July of this year. I had conducted another site visit in July with wetland staff. We needed to determine that there was not going to be any wetland impact, which with this proposal, there will not be. We had then received a phone call from Worshay, Worshay's the builder, and we had some correspondence there regarding the vegetation removal. And by the time I was out there for a follow-up site visit, there was temporary stabilization in place with a silt fence and erosion control blanket around the perimeter of the disturbed area. The proposal includes about 310 cubic yards of excavation, fill, and grading activities to increase that driveway height to meet the flood elevation requirements for the structure. And they want to relocate the driveway from what's kind of existing now, where there's kind of an existing access area, which you can see to the north, that would be relocated further to the south for access. There's an existing easement agreement that they want to expand, and they will be recording that wider easement with the neighbor's approval and the neighbors on board. They do have a preliminary agreement in place. It would just need to be recorded. That would be an additional condition of this permit. And as I mentioned before, the vegetation violation for removal outside of the 20 feet of the structure, they have signed a stipulation agreement for restoration of the vegetation and trees in those areas outside of what would be allowed. Going to the conditions, that first condition is language from the stipulation agreement for the vegetation replacement. An elevation certification would also be required for the driveway to show that it meets the minimum elevation requirement of 1092.95. The new easement agreement would need to be recorded as well. And another condition here would be a work and materials list with a cost estimate to create a financial guarantee in the amount of 125% of the cost of the project as a financial guarantee for this proposal. So with that, we didn't have any public correspondence for this application. And I believe the Soil and Water Conservation District comments were sent out as well. So with that, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, I missed this earlier. Quick, members who visited the site, we'll do a quick roll call of that, starting with you, Jason.
Yes.
All right, Sean?
Yes.
I also was able to visit the site. Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And Joe? All right, so all able to visit. So very good. Okay, with that, we'll, we can go member introduction. So if you don't mind just introducing yourself, name, address for the record.
I'm Lee Monte Brewer, and my address is 3098 Little Crow Drive, Shakopee, Minnesota.
And I am Casey Monte Brewer, same address, 3098 Little Crow Drive, Shakopee, Minnesota.
All right, thank you. Anything that you would like to add to the staff report?
No, I think Nick covered it all.
Okay, all right, very good. Any questions by commission members for staff or the applicants?
Mr. Chair, one question on the SWCD letter for this one. There's a third condition, or in bullet point number three, they talk about some stormwater runoff. Is that included in the existing conditions?
Mr. Chair, Member Wienerman, that is not included in the conditions proposed in the application. So that involves stormwater conveyance for if the new driveway were approved. There's a concern that that stormwater runoff from the driveway on that steep slope could run down, especially towards the wetland area in the floodplain, further down slope. So if the commission felt that it was necessary to add on, we could definitely add a condition to incorporate some stormwater practices in that area of concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good.
Does Brian Schultz, I think, has that engineering already done? Is that correct?
Good question. Just real quick, so that we can kind of either come up with Worshay. If you can just come up and just state your name, so that it's all a part of the public record, that'd be great.
James Hackendorf, Worshay Homes. Do you have my address?
Actually, yes, please.
8273 Gatewater Drive, Monticello, Minnesota.
Perfect, thank you. And so your question again was?
My understanding is Brian Schultz has all that engineering already done, and him and Dan Crone worked together to get all that done that has been given to us to do as part of this project.
Okay, so Nick, go ahead and comment on that.
Mr. Chair and members, the, so what's prescribed in the plans here, which you can see, so all of the erosion control over all of the disturbed areas that's proposed for the project has all been specked out with erosion control blanket. There's redundant sediment control, downslope of all of the disturbed areas as well. In terms of the driveway runoff from the driveway itself, that hasn't been addressed in really any way specifically addressing that stormwater runoff from the driveway itself, because obviously that will change from what's existing, because where the new driveway is proposed is all vegetated and trees right now. So there will be a change in that. There's not any stormwater practices specifically outlined to address that concern.
Okay, all right, very good.
So, Mr. Chairman, it sounded like you both said two different things. Are you understanding each other, or?
I don't, so we can't take any more trees down, but my understanding is that we do have the stormwater management plan done. And when this gets approved, then we can, would take trees to put the new driveway in and put those practices in place.
Right, so basically, my understanding, and Nick, you can correct me or anybody, is that the overall site has had the engineering plan, everything approved. The recommendation from the Stearns, sorry, the Sauk River Watershed District is that as a condition, there would be a proposal, nowhere in that engineered plan has the runoff for the driveway, which is now changed and expanded, been handled. And so the comments are, the concern is that right now, there's nothing disturbing. It's basically a pure bluff that is undisturbed, and it seems to be stable. The additional runoff could contribute to erosion challenges, thus where you would have an additional plan to deal with that water, which hasn't been dealt with yet.
Understood.
So that would be the difference. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and what we have here is essentially an erosion and sediment control plan for the site. A stormwater, a specific stormwater plan would include infiltration trenches or a basin or rain gardens or other mechanisms like that to control stormwater runoff.
Something to catch the water before it hits the lake.
Yep.
All right, very good. Go ahead, Joe.
I'd say with the removal of the vegetation, was that done by yourself, or was that done by another individual?
It was done by Worshay Homes.
Okay, I guess I was a little bit concerned, should there not have been a silt fence put up?
Should there not have been a silt fence put up when that was originally taking place?
As soon as, yes, that's the answer. There was a misunderstanding in our office about, we thought the permit was pulled. We went and started removing trees. As soon as, obviously, we do that, we put up erosion control. We build an awful lot on water. I mean, we work with Stearns County a lot, so some mistakes were made. We totally owned up to those, went above and beyond to make sure everything was taken care of. I think we have a pretty solid reputation for what we do in town here, and...
And that's my point, is that you've got a lot of years of experience doing that, and I'm just wondering how that happened, and that there was no silt fence and the extension of exceeding the amount of tree removal happened?
It happened. I mean, how it happened was basically our fault. I think we took ownership of it. It shouldn't have happened. I can't give you a good reason why it happened, because it shouldn't have. There's no excuse as to why it happened. We gave the tree cutter, we wanted enough space to overdig our footings. And if you look, I mean, and you give it where the stakes for our footings are, they probably went outside of that a little bit, because he went a little overboard with his saw, but it is not very far outside of what we need to overdig the footings in order to get in there and safely operate. So we're really close to that. The erosion control shouldn't have happened. The trees shouldn't have happened without a permit. I 100% own that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask that question. That's what your phone call was on August 1st, to Stearns County, saying?
Was that your phone call, Dave Worshay?
I had talked with David Worshay a few times. Kiwi was the one that had called that first time in August.
Kiwi's one of our site superintendents. Dave Worshay obviously owns the company. Dave would be here, but he's moving his child into college in Montana right now. So I'm filling in in my first one of these, so bear with me.
And, Mr. Chairman, Nick, it says that the call was made, why it wasn't installed?
Right.
And then it doesn't say why it wasn't installed, so.
Kiwi had just mentioned that it wasn't installed, and that they were getting to it, and that, you know, they were going to get to it soon. And then I did the follow-up visit the next week to make sure it was done.
Got it.
All right, very good. Any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused by the visits. So there was five visits, timing is different. And then we get Greg's comments on his August 9th visit. The letter's not dated, so I don't know when the letter came out. But when we're trying to consolidate things and make it easier for everybody, it seems five visits, and then that there's a visit after the five visits, that then determines suddenly that condition number three has to happen. We never saw that coming, or we couldn't have that discussion with the applicants or the developer prior. And then we get this letter after the packet. You know, the flow of things, it's awkward for us as commission members. It's got to be awkward for you as applicants and contractors. How can we do this, that everybody can go out in the site and then do that very first visit that you had on July 5th of 2022, maybe the second visit, you know, certainly on August 1, have Greg there? We seem to get this a lot where it's after, and it just, I feel for the applicants, I feel for the contractor. And if we really want the right thing to be done long-term, is there a way that we can consolidate it, that Greg and you or any other staff can kind of do one visit, and then kind of have everybody there and figure that all out, or am I being too practical?
Mr. Chair, Member Bertram, I, you know, in the past, Greg and I have done a lot of site visits jointly, and that's usually our plan. It doesn't always work out with scheduling that way. I will say that when there's a violation in place, that doesn't always come from a site visit. That might come after. So maybe that's something that's reported to us by the public. So doing separate visits like that is sometimes necessary. You know, if erosion control isn't in place, I have to get out there as soon as I can. I might not be able to coordinate that with other staff, or the property owners, or the builder. So I guess, you know, in that regard, it is very difficult to conduct those jointly. But yeah, to the greatest extent possible, it is ideal if we can do joint visits. You know, we had met over a year ago on site, and I provided all of the application materials at that point. And, you know, and then the materials came in right, you know, after the previous deadline, and then we had to work with the engineer to get the updated plans for the amount of material outside of 20 feet of the structure and along the driveway. So there's a lot of moving pieces in place that, you know, aren't, isn't just one entity where it's coming from. There are, there's the engineer in this case, there's the builder, there's the property owners, there's SWCD, and there's us as staff. And we try to coordinate that to the best of our abilities, so.
When you, Mr. Chairman, when you set up the site visit with the applicants, it looks like you did, do you, do you suggest that the contractors and these other people kind of are all there?
Yep, when I met with the property owners over a year ago, they had a dirtwork contractor there with them at that point. But, you know, the builder was not present. I guess I don't know if the applicants had decided on a builder at that point. A lot of times, these visits happen before a builder is selected even, so that's another challenge.
I'm just thinking, Mr. Chairman, if we can learn from it, if we can try to coordinate and tell applicants, many times, the applicants that I talk to, I mean, they don't have a clue, because they've never done this before. So if we could give them some kind of a checklist and say, we'll meet with you, it would be well advised to have your contractor there, your, you know, your surveyor, whoever else you all want to include, that one conversation. Then it certainly would be good to have all this information, in my opinion, there right away at the front, that it could be designed around that. So let's see if we can try to achieve that goal. I think for the end result, that's what we're here for, so.
Good comments. A lot of challenges organizing all of that information, so. But it does help, obviously, when it's all together. All right, any other questions for staff or applicants? All right, very good. We will move into the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public on this particular topic? Seeing nobody?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right, motion made by Jeff. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Public hearing closed. Any additional correspondence on this or further discussion, or we move into findings of fact? Hearing done. We'll move into findings of fact. So number one is the proposal consistent with the existing county ordinances? Specify the applicable section of the ordinance and discuss why or why not. All right. Staff, do you, I know this is an allowed...
Yep, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, in the description of the proposal for the public notice, that section of the ordinance is always in there. So this one is 10.2.14D of the ordinance.
Thank you, okay. So according to Section 10.2.14D, it is, it is consistent with the county ordinances. All right, thank you, Nick. Number two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, the proposal must meet with the Sauk River Watershed District erosion control permit conditions, as well as the four conditions that we set aside here today specifically.
All right, thank you, Sean.
And as, Mr. Chairman, as Jason Wienerman asked, so is number three in Greg's letter, is that a number five condition then?
That would be for us to determine if we were going to add it on.
I would anticipate that when I make the motion, I will recommend adding, if I make the motion, I would recommend adding the Conservation District condition.
Well, why don't we just?
Yeah, we could do that.
Anyway.
Okay, then I would recommend we have condition number five be bullet point number three from the Conservation District.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion then.
All right, so all members in favor of adding condition number three to the general conditions of this COP, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose? All right, so that will be added. Thank you, Jason and Jeff. Number three, is the proposed use compatible with the present and future land uses in the area, or how can it be separated by distance or screening from adjacent land uses?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe it is compatible with the comprehensive plan goals under nature goal number three, recognize the significance of water resources in the county, ensure creation implementation of policies to manage stormwater in collaboration with land use and development. And number two, water resource policies, number two, recognize the relation between land use and water quality, continue to support water quality improvements through land use plans and regulations.
Very good, thanks, Jason. Number four, how are the potential environmental impacts, groundwater, surface water, air quality, et cetera, of the proposal being addressed? And I know for one, with the conditions, some of those environmental impacts regarding water are being addressed. Any other comments on that one? Okay, and then, how will the potential impacts of the proposal affect the property values of the area in which it's proposed?
We haven't been provided anything.
Yeah, no documentation on that. Number six, does the proposal affect the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents? I'm sorry, I should say, how does that affect the general health and safety of the residents?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here with a single-family home going in. We might see some slight increase in traffic and people living on the landscape, but it should be insignificant.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. And I believe as far as the owners themselves, I think safety was partially cited for the reason of relocating this driveway as well. So very good, thank you. Number seven, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive plan? Specify which goals and objectives. And Jason, you did a nice job outlining that back in question number three. And so unless anyone objects, I think those same goals cited would apply. Number eight, has the applicant provided financial assurance to guarantee reclamation or cleanup?
That's one of the conditions.
It is one of the conditions, thank you. Jeff? And then, are there any other issues pertinent to this matter?
I think, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to say that, you know, we had the discussion about consolidating the visits and laying things out earlier in the process may have been more beneficial.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I recommend, I move that we recommend approval of the conditional use permit request for a major shoreline asteroid alteration submitted by the Monte Brewer family, with a recommendation for approval of the permits.
Okay, and with the five conditions?
With the five conditions.
All right, thank you, Jason. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Sean. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those oppose? All right, so recommendation for approval will be made by the Planning Commission to the board. Shelley, what's the date? Thank you, Jeff. On August 23rd will be the County Board of Commissioners meeting, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to agenda item number two, and that is to consider a conditional use permit request for a major shoreline alteration submitted by the Order of St. Benedict, Collegeville, according to Section 10.2.14D of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, for topographic alteration of more than 100 cubic yards within twice the building setback. The property under consideration is 135.28A of the northwest quarter of Section 1, Collegeville Township. Property address is 2850 Abbey Plaza in Collegeville, Minnesota. So before I forget this time, let's do a quick roll call of the members who visited the site, and we'll start with you, Jason, District One.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
All right, I also was able to visit the site. District Four, Ken?
Yes.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you. With that, we have our applicants here. We'll come back to you in a second, and we'll start with staff report, if you're good to go, Nick.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is a request for land alteration. Topography on the lot here, bluff and steep slopes are present between the roadway and Stump Lake. Most of the other project areas are pretty flat and either already disturbed or built on or impervious on the landward side of the road on campus. For the soils on this site, sandy loam that are highly erodible on the slope. Other areas are pretty loamy with minimal erodibility. Vegetation on the site is wooded between the road and Stump Lake, maintained campus vegetation elsewhere where the proposed upgrades are proposed in this project. Stump Lake is not on the impaired waters list. We did receive a construction site permit for some woodshop project improvements, which kind of stemmed this whole application process. There was discussion early on that a DNR permit might have been involved, which would have put it under a minor shoreline permit for the county. But the DNR did not require a permit, so that's where it's a major permit for us. So I had met with campus and facility staff and Westwood, and they had submitted an application for this. The largest area of concern in terms of the ordinance is the area from the road to the water as a project. Total cut and fill amounts there, 410 cubic yards of cut and 360 cubic yards of fill. And then there's some pipe installation for other facility upgrades that they have proposed, with about 1,500 cubic yards total for the project. In the area, down the slope to the outfall, there is vegetation removal proposed on the slope, and they have an erosion and sediment control plan in place, and four rows of silt fences, redundant sediment control are proposed for sediment control, erosion control blanket specked out everywhere else for areas that are disturbed. One of the SWCD comments was to incorporate kind of a stilling area at the outfall of, near the lake on the slope, at the bottom of the slope. That was implemented, and that was a change that the applicants and the engineer had incorporated into their plans. So that took into consideration SWC comments, and that is on the updated plans that were sent out. With that, the one proposed condition here would be to minimize the bluff and steep slope alterations as much as possible adjacent to the lake and to follow all the erosion and sediment control practices as proposed. We did not receive any correspondence regarding this application, and with that, that is all I have.
All right, thanks, Nick. Applicants, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Brother Benedict Leitner, 2900 Abbey Plaza, Collegeville, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Russ Klein.
Russ Klein, 12650 County Road 51, St. Joseph, Minnesota.
All right, very good. Anything you would like to add to the staff report?
We're good.
Good, okay, all right, thank you. All right, so with that, any questions from Planning Commission for the staff or applicants?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, question for the staff. So the primary area we're looking at here is the area between St. John Road and the lake, right? That's our area focus. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, the areas that are outside of 20 feet of the proposed construction are also applicable, obviously not as much of a concern due to the flat topography and distance from the water, though it is still within twice the setback of the lake, which is 400 feet as a natural environment lake, so that's part of the reason why it gets encompassed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? All right, well, with that, we will go to the public hearing. Is anyone here from the public on this agenda item? Not seeing a rush for the front, a motion would be in order.
I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Sean. You have a second?
Second, Jason Wienerman.
Thank you, Jason. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? All right, public hearing closed. Any further discussion on this particular item? Appreciate dealing with the watersheds comments, that makes things a lot easier when everything kind of comes in harmony, and it's obviously a good recommendation for the lake, which everyone appreciates, so.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I'll say that in the others again, same thing, three visits, three months later, the comments come in, and again, if we could streamline that, you probably would have agreed to that right away from the beginning, it would have been in the plan, we wouldn't have to do letters, so again, just a teachable moment. I'll say that in the other comment as well.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, anything else before we go to findings of fact? All right, so, number one is a proposal consistent with existing county ordinances, specify the applicable section of the ordinance and discuss why or why not. And similar to before, I believe 10.2.14D will apply to this one. Number two, are there any other standards, rules, or requirements that the proposal must meet?
The one condition?
Yeah, one condition to minimize the bluff and steep slope alteration as much as possible, and then follow all erosion and sediment control practices.
And, Mr. Chair, just a recognition that because the DNR did not provide a comment, that was why this became a major shoreline alteration.
Hey, very good, thank you, Jason. Good point. Number three is the proposed use compatible with the present and future land uses in the area, or can it be separated by distance or screening from adjacent land uses?
It's compatible, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, very consistent, just an update to the woodshop, so, very good, thank you, Jeff. Number four, how are the potential environmental impacts, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wildlife habitat of the proposal being addressed?
The one condition, Mr. Chairman, and also incorporating the soil and water comments from Greg.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Jeff. Entire plan is kind of dealing with those issues, and all considerations are taken. Number five, will, how will the potential impacts of the proposal affect the property values of the area in which it is proposed? Not provided and?
Provided, no effect.
Number six, how does the proposal affect the general health, safety, and welfare of the residents?
Minimal effect, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sean. Number seven, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's Comprehensive Plan, specify which goals and objectives?
Mr. Chair, it does comply with our goals and objectives and our nature goals. Number one, to preserve, restore, and protect important natural systems and natural resources. Water resource policies in a number of places. Number one, an example to adhere to adopted plans and regulations that maintain, restore, and enhance the county's water resources.
Very good, thanks, Sean. Number eight, has the applicant provided financial assurance to guarantee reclamation or cleanup?
It's not applicable.
In this case, it's not applicable, yeah, thank you. And then, number nine, any other issues pertinent to the matter?
Mr. Chairman, the comments about consolidating the visits and the comments.
All right, somebody for, thank you, Jeff. Anything else on this one? If not, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval.
All right, motion made by Jeff, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, motion by Jeff with the one condition, I presume, and then second by Mike, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? All right, recommendation for approval, we'll go to the County Board for August 23rd. If you have any other questions, reach out to staff.
Thank you to staff, we have a good working relationship and really appreciate it.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it. All right, Agenda Item Number Three, to consider a conditional use permit request submitted by Christine Luna Munger, I hope I pronounced that correctly, of St. Joseph's, Minnesota, according to Section 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, 9.3, and 10.2 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439. The request is to reactivate an animal feedlot facility greater than 10 animal units within 300 feet of a stream classified as shoreline. The reactivation would consist of a total and partial confinement barns and open lots, along with a maximum of 31 animal units. The property under consideration is 12 acres, located in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Eight, St. Joseph Township. Property address is 11400 County Road 51 in St. Joe. And before I forget again, members who've visited the site, we'll start with you, Jason.
Mr. Chair, I got to the lock gate, looked over the gate and called it good.
All right, very good, thank you. Sean?
Same.
All right, I, I know right where the property is, but I also did not step foot on it, so, was there, but didn't enter. Ken?
Yes, I guess I'm the same way, we've been all past that place numerous times.
Very good, Mike?
Yep.
All right, Jeff?
I was there.
And Joe?
True confessions, I went around the gate and walked down the driveway.
You know what, better you, you have a lot of health, extra steps, good, very good, all right, thank you. Then we have staff report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so, this is a request to reestablish an animal feedlot for 10 animal units or more that's located in Shoreland Overlay District. This site is located at 11400 County Road 51, St. Joe. It is 12 acres, zoned A40 in Section Eight of St. Joe Township. Some of the relevant information is that the feedlot is currently deactivated, and it was deactivated on March 23rd of 2007, based on the site not having animals on it since 2004, as documented on an inspection from March 23rd of 2007. Why it was deactivated is because there was no animals present for a 12-month consecutive time period. The feedlot prior to deactivation was registered for 141.5 animal units, consisting of 75-headed beef cattle and 95-headed feeder cattle. The applicant is requesting for a total of 31 animal units, and those are all listed there in the chart within your staff report. So, just a range of beef cattle and calves, a few hogs, chickens, and then some layer hands and sheep, and then goats. The facility was inspected on July 12th of 2022, and no compliance status was required by staff since there is no animals currently on the parcel. However, based on the proposed use of the feedlot structures that are there and open lots, staff does not believe there will be a pollution potential. We received your application July 13th of 2022. The proposed feedlot will have an overall smaller footprint than the historic footprint, consisting of total and partial confinement buildings, open lots, and then pasture. So also in your packet, there is the historic footprint map, and so that is shown on the screen right now, outlined by the purple polygon. So historically, that's what it was encompassing, basically encompassing for a footprint versus what they're asking for now, which is included in the map on the screen right now. So you can see all those orange polygons, that's what they're asking for, for buildings that are existing out there, and then open lots. All the surrounding properties are zoned A40. Section 10.2.26 of Stearns County Ordinance requires a compliant SEPTIC cert for existing subsurface sewage treatments in the Shoreland Overlay District, and currently there's no homes on the site and no existing subsurface sewage treatment, so no certification will be required for this request. There's no wetlands impacted by the proposal on this property. There's 152 residences and five existing registered feedlots within one mile, that's also shown on a map included in your packet. The nearest residence to the property is located 1,154 feet to the southeast of the closest proposed feedlot area, and then, as you all know, access to the feedlot is via County Road 51. And then there's no EAW's, Environmental Assessment Worksheet, Environmental Impact Statement, EIS, State Disposal System, SDS, or National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and PDS permit is not required for this facility at this time. Staff has just two recommendations for conditions, and those are also listed in your packet. And then, also typically in your packet is the draft minutes from the FRC meeting. Those were emailed to the board members on August 16th, so if you guys could just state for the record who was, who did receive those and who was able to view them.
Would you like to do that now?
Yes, please.
So we can start, Jason?
Yes.
All right, Sean?
Yes.
I also was, Ken?
Dad was there.
Yeah, you were at it, yeah, good point. Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, just because the minutes we received after the package went off.
Correct, yeah, they would have been emailed to you.
And Joe?
No, I didn't, I didn't take a look.
Okay. All right.
All right, and then that's all I have for a staff report until we get to the public testimony part, so.
Yep, okay, thank you. And I'll go to the applicant, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Christine Luna Munger, 116 10th Avenue Southeast, St. Joseph, Minnesota.
All right, very good, anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
No, just that it was very helpful to have folks come out and teach us and help us along, so, use my teacher voice, not my spiritual director voice. There we go. Found the process really helpful.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, with that, any questions by members for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Joe?
I'm curious why we're going with 31 animal units? I mean, specifically, as far as is there a certain number that trips a certain amount of size or conditions to be on the property? Why 31 and not 40?
I can start answering that first half of it. So what trips this request, needing a conditional use permit and being in front of the board tonight, is that they're asking to reactivate a once-registered feedlot that had more than 10 animal units on the site, and they're asking for more than 10 animal units. So if they were to ask for less than 10 animal units, they wouldn't need a conditional use permit, it would just be a straight permit over the counter, so.
Yeah, that I understand, but specifically why 31?
And I think Christine could probably answer why her animal numbers and types added up to the 31, so.
Yeah, that was actually part of the helpful process, was just being invited to imagine, you know, what we, we don't have a current operation running now, so it was really estimates about what we'd like to have eventually. We don't ever plan to be as big as Mr. Walt's had prior to us, so it was just imagining what was possible for our capacity with smaller place, 12 acres.
Okay, I guess my question would be is, why set a limit at 31 with you would have the possibility to expand if you wanted to expand, but that's why, is there a magic number that can be on that property?
So, because it's 10 acres or more in A40, there technically isn't necessarily a cap per se, but because it's in shoreline, they could ask for what it historically was, and then they could also ask via conditional use permit to be greater than that, but there is a cap that the state does set, that they can't be over basically 1,000 animal units in shoreline for a once-existing feedlot.
While I'm asking questions, is that in regard, what about with regards to the size of the property? I mean, with 1,000 animal units, doesn't it have to be a minimum size of the property as well or not?
For us, for county ordinance, it would have to be a minimum of 10 acres zoned egg, so whether it's A40, A80, A160, it has to be egg, and a minimum of 10 acres to not have an animal unit density restriction.
So you're saying, Josie should go right for the 1,000 right away?
It's just, I'm just curious why 31, and you know, why the number at 50, but I mean, that's, I'm just curious how we came up with the number 31, I don't know if you played basketball and that was your number?
Nope, it was just thinking of the different possible animals, so we won't have all of them, you know, right away, but Bethy Jo encouraged us to think about what we might possibly ever imagine happening and, you know, what we could, what we could handle, and so we just landed at that after doing some dreaming and visioning.
Okay, and then I, when we get, before we get to the public hearing, I'll just say this now, I did get a comment from somebody, they called me, and they were concerned about the number of animal units, in particular, if it would switch from a hobby farm, let's say, to just a chicken production, would that have to, if you were to go that route, okay, because I think 31 animal units would be a large number of chickens, would that have to go through an additional public hearing, or would that be possible to happen on the property?
Commissioner Persky, so the way it works in our ordinance, it's outlined regarding shoreline overlay feedlots, is that, once they're registered or permitted for animal units, they can't swap types, so if, for example, if someone has been historically or only been permitted for cattle animal units, they can't just go and swap those all for chickens without coming back through the process again. So, for example, for what Christine is asking for is kind of a variety of different ones, so in theory, yes, if she has less cows, she could potentially have more chickens or more pigs, because she would be permitted for the numerous swine, chickens, the goats, they could fluctuate depending on numbers, but be limited to what she's asking for at the 31 animal units in any combination of, so.
Mr. Chair, kind of related to that question, so when, should we recommend in the County Board approve the reactivation of this feedlot? The feedlot activation goes with the property, not the landowner, so they could sell it to somebody else if they have the same, and they can run a different, because there are the different numbers and kinds of animals, you could have 12 cows, and then the next owner comes in and gets 1,500 chickens. That would be a potential opportunity.
Yes, that is, that is how it could be, so the permit is issued to the land, so that would travel with the landowner, assuming that, that feedlot stays active, because as mentioned in the staff report, if there is a 12 consecutive month time period where there is no animals on the property, then basically it becomes deactivated again, and then if a new owner were to come in after that 12 months, they would have to be going through this conditional use permit request again. But in the scenario that that wasn't the case, where there was always animals on there without it being a 12 consecutive month time period, someone could come in and yes, change all those animal units the way it's outlined now to all chickens, because it has been permitted for that animal type prior to them acquiring ownership of it and still being active.
A little bit of a follow-up on that. So if there's a 12-month gap, so, one of the owners anywhere down the line sells the parcel, the new owner wants to do construction, if they do construction, having pulled all the animals off the site for 13 months, while the construction's occurring... while the construction's occurring, does the permit then lapse?
If it falls within that 12 consecutive time month without having any animals on there at all, then it would.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Well, just, you know, good discussion. Just to put it in perspective, I think that comes out to, what, 1,550 chickens you could put on that property? No one's going to start a chicken barn for 1,500 chickens. You can't afford to do that. So, I mean, just realistically, I think, understand the concern because I read that as well, legitimate. But I think if you look at realistically 31 animal units, you're not going to be starting a large-scale egg operation in today's climate.
Mr. Chair, the big part of the deal is the shoreline stuff. And if you have 1,500 chickens, you're probably going to have them in a building. So you're not going to have them free-ranging out there. It'd take a little bit to round up 1,500 chickens on your property.
Yeah, not right on, so. Anyway, no, it's good discussion. I just, I don't know how realistic the concern is and then from a practical perspective, so. All right, any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, if not, Bethy Jo, I do know you have a couple. We'll, I guess, open the public hearing. And I know there's a couple of letters on that. So if you, we've been provided them, but I don't know if you just want to summarize for the record?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, yes.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we have other members here, or other people here from the public. So go ahead, and then we'll read the letters in afterwards. So sorry about that. And then if you can just state your name and address for the record.
I will. My name's Doug Fredrickson. I'm with the St. Joseph Town Board Supervisor. Address is 26545 Jade Road, St. Clog.
All right.
Jump to conclusion, Christine's been in our meetings.
I've seen her once.
She kind of explained what, you know, what she was going to do a year ago, what her hopes were, things like that. But so, take my challenging questions maybe as a chance for me to get a quick education. And don't conclude whether or not I'm supporting, or we're supporting or not supporting right away. But, yeah, what caught our eye was the 31 units straddling the Watab Creek. It is not about the neighbors. It's not about the area and the zoning. It is about the pollution aspects that can occur. It's what really drove the other members inside our board. So, yes, we were curious, and I knew I'd find out eventually here, about was it going to be primarily cattle primarily, chickens primarily, this? Because 31, we were doing the math as you guys were going. Well, but our focus always came back to the same thing is that, I mean, we've had other feedlots in St. Joe, and they're straddling small streams. And if that's not monitored really close, it doesn't take long for those cattle to post hole the area 50, 100 feet out from that creek area. And the vegetation is gone, and it's no longer pasture. And it really has to be monitored. And then, so I'm kind of curious, what happens if the current rule is that that'll be pastured so that it doesn't, I'm assuming so it doesn't happen? Are there things in there if it does happen? If that turns into a quagmire on both sides of that stream, are there methodologies or abilities for the county to direct you to change your operation, reduce the number of cattle, or lighten up the load? Or those be one of our questions that we're curious about. And again, it gives back more to the pollution, not about the smell. And I'll just finish my question if you guys would, and just answer them as you can. But that was, number one, was the precautions that are taken to prevent. Does the term reactivation have a special meaning in the requirements to a permit? I mean, is it a separately defined term? Because, I mean, like, when my septic system is out of compliance, we're no longer in, I can't ask for that to be reactivated into approval. I mean, if this was a brand-new feedlot request within 300-foot shoreline of a lake, would we, would the county approve a brand-new feedlot within the shoreline 300-foot boundary? If so, then the question goes to, what does the shoreline 300-foot boundary prevent? If not a feedlot, from being right next to the water? I mean, it seems like one of the biggest items it was maybe designed for. So that's what caught our eye, that's what caught our discussion. The fact it's a reactivation could make it completely different. Do I think it'll be managed well and done well, things like that? Yes, yes, we do. We are not here to try and prevent this from going on, but we have significant questions that it continues to fulfill what her dream that she described to us as to what it would be like. And what if it doesn't turn out that way? Or what if the next owner doesn't turn out that way? And that nice little creek looks really, really different in four or five years? So those are my questions. That was the conclusion of my questions.
All right, thank you for asking the questions, and we'll take a shot at them. I think I might be able to answer a couple of them, but then I'll defer to you if there's anything you want to add. So precautions for the stream itself. One of the things that's called out in the conditions is the owner shall construct, obviously, the proposed improvements according to the plans and specs and the guidelines submitted under the application. So basically, there's an area outlined on their application, right here in yellow, which states where the feedlot will be located. So it's smaller than what the old feedlot used to be. And as you'll see, the feedlot stays away from the water. And then the second condition says the area is used as pasture from open lots toward the stream. So basically, everything between the yellow outline and that stream would remain as pasture to prevent exactly the situation you're describing.
What's the difference between a pasture with 31 cows in it for a period that's way too long and a feedlot?
That's a fair question, and I defer to Ken or Bethy Jo on that description.
I can answer that, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So by Minnesota 7020, basically rules and definitions and the way it is aligned for our ordinance is pasture is basically anything that contains vegetation throughout the growing season. So, yes, as you had indicated, depending on this owner, the next owner, there's always the management card that comes into play. But as Mr. Cron had said, is that basically what's outlined in orange up there right now is what they're asking for. So those are really the only areas that could not contain vegetation during the growing season. So the rest of it, yes, from there on out, you know, to the stream, would have to have some form of vegetation. There's no height requirement, but yes, it would have to be what we would fall under the definition of pasture by 7020 rules.
Okay, that would, certainly by looking at that picture, that certainly is our goal that it's managed just like you're describing it.
Yeah, and then to your second question, the reactivation versus a new application. In both cases, if this wasn't within, you know, the shoreline distance, it would just be permissible. And it wouldn't ever go through this review process to make sure that considerations like what you're concerned about get addressed. And so whether it was new or reactivated, that's where the CUP process helps to make sure those considerations are taken into account before things are just otherwise permitted.
Mr. Chair, if I may also, Becky Schlar, Environmental Services Supervisor. The state statute requires that feedlots that had been once active in shoreline are allowed to reactivate. And so our ordinance just lays out the provisions of how to do that.
Okay.
Thanks, Becky. I didn't know that either. That was good, so. Did that help?
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question there about that then. Is there a difference then if there's been some kind of disciplinary action involved with when the application was, maybe it wasn't deactivated, maybe it was suspended or revoked or something? We wouldn't be looking at that same language, correct?
Mr. Chair, Member Blackburn, we do not have, there aren't any state statutes or ordinances that would be different for that situation. And I don't know that we've actually had a situation where we have, at the county level, revoked a permit.
All right, I apologize. Is anyone else here from the public on this one? All right, sorry again for missing you. My fault. Bethy Jo, I know there's a couple other letters. If you just wanted to summarize those for the record.
Yep, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So I did forward these to you today, so hopefully you did get a chance to read them. But I'll address them and put them into the record and summarize them. So we did, and I will go through them in the order that we received those. So we did receive one on Thursday, August 11th. And that was in regards to the property and business owners just to the west of this request. They are supportive of Christine's efforts to rehab the farm and reestablish the feedlot. We believe bringing back livestock to the farm and investing in rural Stearns County is good for the neighborhood and larger community. We believe the rotational pasture and perennial agriculture will be a net positive to the water quality of Watab River by strengthening the living cover in the riparian area. Sincerely, Milk and Honey Ciders Team cider maker, cider co-owner, which is at 11738 County Road 51, St. Joseph, Minnesota. And Peter was the one who had sent that email in. The other one we received on Monday, August 15th, and this one is from Dan Holan. And he lives along Kramer Lake and heard about this. I am on the St. Joe Township Planning Commission. I'm giving my concern as a private citizen and do not speak for the township. Some of the concerns were the hobby farm, as Mr. Persky had mentioned, of being a maximum of 31 animal units. And it just states that they had found some stuff on regards to the Minnesota administrative rules regarding what an animal unit means, which is just a unit of measure used to compare differences in the production of animal manure that employs. As a standard, they amount a manure produced on a regular basis by a slaughter steer or heifer for an animal feedlot or a manure storage area calculated by multiplying the number of animals of each type by the respective multiplication factor and summing the results values for the total number of animal units. So then it just lists out the dairy cow cattle and what those values are based upon the weight. Same thing with beef cattle, same thing with swine, which are the same values that are listed in that chart in your guys' packet. One horse being one animal unit. Same thing with sheep. It takes 10 sheep to equal one animal unit. And then it lays out the chickens, turkeys, and ducks. And then it just shows, based on these 31 animal units, it could be 31 cows total, 77.5 sows if you were just to do pigs, 310 sheep if you were just going to do sheep, 1,722 turkeys if you were just going to do turkeys. But just keep in mind that that's not what is on the application or requests. And then the chickens are, which would be 6,200 chickens. It is stated, I'm against this as the CUP would open this up to any of these possibilities and don't want to be blindsided. It has happened before. If it's truly going to be a hobby farm, why do they want to increase the number of animal units? And would be a lot of animals on only 12 acres. They also want to be within 300 feet of South Fork of Watab Creek. I'm opposed to this as well. We have situations grandfathered in where cows walk in the creek, but we certainly don't want this to go forward. There is a law there for a reason, and I'm sure that this will be put in into place to protect the creek and the citizens downstream. Imagine if they pull the wool over our eyes and have a 1,722 turkey barn that is next to the creek with manure running into it. Finally, I'm against this. CUP has written, and I think it leaves a lot of loopholes. Thank you, Dan Holan. And that are the two comments that I have gotten in regards to this request by email, so.
All right, very good. Thanks, Bethy Jo. All right, with that motion, it would be in order to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sean. Second?
Second.
All right, by Jason. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those oppose? All right, public hearing closed. Any further discussion?
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ken.
In here, this person says something about cows walking in the creek, and it's been grandfathered in. Now, I don't know, I know several farmers that are on century farms. And this is 15, 20 years ago. They were told that their cattle had to stay out of the streams or whatever. They had to put fences up and whatever. So are cattle allowed to walk in streams? Because the ones I know of, they weren't allowed to.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so there is, there is some focus in the 7020 rules in regards to certain types of lakes regarding access from cattle. But as far as streams and other conduits of water, they are allowed to access to it, so. It could be their own personal choice to put up fences or direct cattle over one crossing area or something like that. But there is no law that restricts them to not have access to it, so.
Okay, I just thought there was.
And Bethy, sort of related to that question. So Watab Creek is a river. We talked about the pasture law. The buffer was also enforced here, too. So they have to have a minimum 50-foot width of permanent vegetation on both sides of that creek, correct?
I can't say for sure if it is 50 or if it's less than that. But again, like you had said, I mean, the plans end, as you can see, as outlined in the orange, that there is no plans to have feedlot right up to the creek as in open lot, non-pasture definition proposal. Historically, as you could see in that one map, it was a much larger footprint historically than what's being requested now, which does cover both sides of that creek in the historic polygon, so.
Mr. Chair, Member Wienerman, we, just looking at the scale bar on that map with the orange footprint that's being proposed, it looks like it's going to be more than 50 feet. But there's not a prescribed distance other than the permitted area of the footprint. But if the planning commission wanted to make a recommendation with something more specific in that condition, you're open to do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, someone? If we're going to move on to findings of facts, if anyone wants to make any additions to the, or changes to the conditions, we could do that now if you want to discuss that. Or we can just roll into it.
What would the language be? And how would we?
Yeah, I don't know.
How would we enforce it?
Very fair. Omo de finding is a fact, and we can always come back to it if someone feels it needs to be placed, so. If you guys are all good with that? All right, number one, is the proposal consistent with the Stearns County Ordinance Number 439? Please specify all performance standards.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I hope I get this right. 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, 9.3, and 10.2.
You did a really good job, Jason. Thank you. All right, is there an environmental assessment worksheet? EAW, environmental impact statement, national pollution discharge elimination system, state disposal system, or other permit required for this facility?
No permits required, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Number three, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive land use plan? Please specify the appropriate sections.
Mr. Chair, it does conform to the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. We look at agricultural goals. Number one, to support agriculture as a desirable land use for the long term and facilitate diversification of the county's agricultural economy.
Thank you, Sean. Number four, will the site configuration, number and type of animals at this site and prevailing wind conditions impact any of the following areas? Traffic, public safety, schools, parks, churches, or other impacts?
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate to ask the applicant another question related to this?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
So we've talked about this being a hobby farm, a small farm. So you're right on a fairly major corner, two roads coming together. How are you going to get animals on and off the lot? Have you given thought to that yet? How are you going to get animals on and off the lot? Have you given thought to that yet?
Yeah, you'd have to, we'd have to use trailers.
So it would be trailers, not like trucks or things you're thinking. Okay.
Good, all right. Perfect. Any other?
In response, I believe there'd be minimal impact to anything stated there.
Hear what, chickens or something jumping out of the truck?
The only thing, if you got a semi coming in, they're turning around at the corner.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Very good. Thanks, Jason. All right, number five, has information been provided regarding the impact to property values in the area as a result of the proposal?
No.
Thank you, Jeff. Have all recommendations from the Feedlot Review Committee and Feedlot staff been reviewed? And I know we've been provided them and taken a look at them. Any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Mr. Chair, I would maybe say that the township reference concerns about protection of the quality of water.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, a lot of discussion about water protection in this, which I think has been addressed by this applicant and realizing things could change, but doesn't seem to be the intention under this CUP. All right, with that, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, bullet point number seven. Just to reiterate in the record, the feedlot that we are reactivating is a substantial reduction over what was in the previous. So it's not across the river. It's a smaller footprint, so we should see less environmental impact with this reactivation.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. I think it's just a little over 20% of what the previous allowed animal units would have been. So yeah, substantial decrease.
Mr. Chair, I might ask you a question here. Christine, I like this idea. I think it's good to see some agriculture coming back. I like seeing the hobby farm coming back. I think that's great, and I want this to be successful. I do want to say I very much have concerns like Doug does about that creek and about what future use might look like. You know, we did say that, you know, perhaps we'd like to see some other protection. We alluded to that protecting the stream. Becky, when we talk about the buffer, the buffer relates to non-tillable, so you can't till up within the 50 feet of the creek. Is that correct, as far as maintaining a buffer?
Mr. Chair, member Persky, the condition that is being considered is for it to remain pasture.
I know, but a buffer is considered that it's non-tillable up to that 50 feet, correct?
So there's no distance listed, and it's pasture. So that would be the buffer, is that it's pasture.
Okay. I'm just wondering, Christine, if you would be interested at all as putting something as far as crossing and keeping animals out of the stream or out of the creek?
Yeah, I will say that when Bethy, Joe, and I talked about it, I, too, was surprised to learn that you could let your cow go right through it. We talked about which animals are even big enough to cross the creek and what would they do. We haven't decided yet, but my husband and I are still in the process of determining where the fences will be on the property. And as you can imagine, just for other reasons, because of the creek, it makes a lot of problems for other, you know, just lots of concerns on the farm. And so so far, we're imagining an entire perimeter just on the whole property with time. And we love the creek as well. It's why I bought the property. And I suspect that we will make plans to be able to use it recreationally, to have, you know, to be able to sit by it, to enjoy it. So if nothing else, maybe mowing the really tall grass in certain areas just to be able to sit by it and enjoy it. I'm not sure whether we would put a fence there, but I do know that if we have any animals that would ever be big enough to cross it, we would probably keep them contained in other parts of the property with, I can't imagine wanting the cows to cross the river. So maybe at some point, if we don't have a fence there, you know, we could have chickens pasturing in that small, but they wouldn't ever be large enough to cross the creek. So I don't anticipate allowing any large animals to go into it. My daughter was already, you know, concerned about the leeches that showed up on her legs when she jumped into the creek. So having larger animals and whatnot, I think.
No, but I, and back to what Ken had said, I was surprised. I thought there was some type of prohibited ordinance that kept cattle out of the creeks, but I guess there's not.
I don't know, from my experience, when I farmed up in Todd County, we went through grant processes and if we had, we had land on a waterway, and that was one of the provisions for the grant for our feedlots, for cost sharing, is we had to fence and keep the animals out of the water. That was in accordance with that sucker or watershed, too.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, there's sometimes a misconception between rule and requirements and best management practices. So yes, fencing animals out of water is a best management practice and often rewarded with incentives and dollars.
Stearns County didn't offer me anything, and they said I had to put a fence 200 feet away from my pond that overflowed into a stream. And so I had a fence there. Now I know it have cattle there, so not a problem anymore.
Christine and members of the board, is it possible for us, though, to put any type of stipulation as far as keeping cattle out of that into this permit? Is that something that you would entertain or that you would consider? And that way, the following owner could not necessarily practice that. Would you be considerate in maybe doing that?
Certainly, I'm not as knowledgeable about if that's a thing that can happen. I mean, I would defer to common practices. I can understand, you know, the concern that a future person would use it in a different way.
And here's where I'm going with it. I have no problem. Let's say even if you have a bunch of goats or a few sheep, and they go down to the river, that's not a problem for me. But if you do have, let's, you know, 20 cows or cattle down there, and they go ahead and basically they use that as a water source, and their manure and urine runs right into that creek, it's not necessarily best practice?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree.
Joe, I don't know this, but would you have the ability to do that at the county board of commissioners level if you elected to go that route?
You know, we could do that, and you could see if you're okay with that, because this will come back to the full board on Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, if you want a full confession, my husband and I are at odds about even whether we will have the cattle or how many there will be, because I'm concerned about large animals as well. So again, from our perspective, I don't anticipate problems, and if we ever do have them, I would anticipate following best practice, whether it's something to, you know, look at in the future, not opposed to it.
But then we could write that in a condition in the use, that cattle cannot be pastured into the stream. Could we not?
Yeah. I'd also be curious. I mean, I know that Floyd, who had it before us, had close to 100 cattle on the property, and I'd be curious to know what impacts, you know, existed when he was using it. I mean, I can see the leftovers of the cattle near the creek with just the holes close to it. A lot of that has grown over now and, you know, whatnot, but.
And not to mention the erosion control, because they just continually knock the shorebank into the stream. And then, of course, that sediment carries down.
Mr. Chairman, if we maybe can just pause and reflect in the sunlight, there's 31 cattle. I grew up on the farm. We still farm a lot of cow manure, cow tails, whatever. I never died from cow manure or urine, but the pesticides that are being used in road ditches by state and county, and I'd be a lot more concerned about that. So if we do approve, recommend approval, remember these items normally go on the consent agenda unless you pull it. If we're going to do something, I'd do it here, but I would just say 500 chickens and the number of cattle, I really don't think this is a concern.
Good discussion. I'm not going to lose too much sleep over it, but if anyone feels strongly we could do it now, otherwise we can, otherwise a motion's in order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the recommendation with the two, with the two.
Two conditions? All right. Thank you. Mike, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
All right, so motion by Mike, second by Sean with the two conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so motion recommend approval will go to the county board on the 23rd. So, all right, thank you. All right, that takes us to agenda item number four. That's to consider a conditional use permit request submitted by Shirley Anderson Trust from Belgrade, Minnesota, according to sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, and 9.3 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439. Their request is to construct a covered concrete liquid manure storage area and to convert a wood chip stockpile pad to a solid manure storage stockpile pad at a feedlot facility greater than 700 animal units or more, sorry, or more in an A4 zoning district. The feedlot facility is not proposing any changes regarding animal units or animal types. The property under consideration is 130.52 acres located in the southeast quarter, less double R row and less south 225 feet of the east 100 foot and less than west 500. I'm just going to list the address. It's a lot of numbers, which is 44338 County Road 19 in Belgrade, Minnesota. That is one crazy little property description, too.
Railroad running through it.
Ah, thank you. Well, you know, I would have said railroad if I knew with all this letter soup that's what that was representing, which makes sense. Very good. All right, so real quick, again, because I forget these things, members who visited the site. Jason?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
I also did. Ken?
I didn't drive this time because I've been passed numerous times, so I knew where it was and.
Fair enough. All right, thank you, Ken. Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Joe?
I did not.
Okay, all right. With that, we'll come back and do intros, but we'll get started with staff report.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So as stated, this feedlot is located off of County Road 19. It is zoned A40, and it's 130.52 acres located in Crow Lake Township. They're requesting to basically construct a 51-foot, 2-inch by 160-foot, long by 8-foot-deep covered concrete liquid manure storage area, which is known as the LMSA, with a covered 6-foot by 6-foot by 8-foot concrete pump out. And then they're looking at converting an 876-square-foot concrete wood chip stockpile pad to a solid manure stockpile pad. Those numbers are number eight and number 10, as indicated on the map up on the screen right now. So the comp plan is listed in there in your packet. Just some additional information regarding this site is that it's remained registered with the county and state since January 13th of 2000. It meets all state and county registration requirements. The original registration was for 846 animal units. That's basically what they're asking for on this permit as well, which is outlined in your packet, consists of swine and then slaughter steers for the 846. We inspected the facility on April 26th of 2022 and determined by staff to be compliant with Stearns County Ordinance 439 and Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 for water quality discharge standards, but was found to be noncompliant for land application records for crop year 2022. A manure management plan was submitted on July 13th of 2022, and the MMP includes land application records for crop years 20 and 21. The applicant will be, as stated in your packet, will be submitting the land application records. To update you, those have been submitted to the office, and they are under review. Just to note that prior to any feedlot permit issuance, the manure management plan will be required to meet Minnesota Rules Chapter 7020 requirements. So as stated in the packet, it's been submitted to us, and it is under review. The joint county and state feedlot permit application was received on June 8th of 2022. The current facility has the total and partial confinement barns and a personal-use truck wash, open lots, liquid manure storage areas, and a concrete pad for wood chip storage and a concrete feed pad. The proposed LMSA will be concrete, and it will be covered, and it's proposed to store the washwater from the personal-use truck wash facility that's located there on site. Per the submitted conditional use permit application, the new LMSA will provide nine months of storage, which is much more than what they currently existing structures allow. The site has two previous CUPs. One was issued in 2008, which was 07-43, and did not contain any conditions. A second CUP for this site was issued in 2009, 09-34, which contained four conditions that the facility is compliant with. And so those conditions are listed out in your packet. The surrounding adjoining properties are zoned A40. There's no wetlands impacted by the proposal on the parcel. There's 39 residences and six existing registered feedlots within one mile of this feedlot request. Those are outlined with the maps in your packet. The nearest residence to the property is located approximately 2,209 feet to the east of the existing feedlot, and that's also shown on the map provided in your packet. We do have one valid complaint on file for the site, which was from 2019. The complaint was received by ESD on 6/28/2019. It was resolved by 7/3/2019. There is a potential for manure contamination runoff from a small temporary manure stockpile near the truck wash and parking lot into the road ditch, which was resolved by removing the stockpile. Access to the feedlot is via County Road 19, and per the submitted conditional use permit application, no changes to current driveways or existing lighting is proposed on site. And then at this time, an environmental assessment worksheet, EAW, environmental impact statement, EIS, state disposal system, SDS or National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and PDES permit is not required for this facility. The two conditions are outlined in your packet that are suggested in regards to this request. And then again, as before, typically the FRC minutes are within the packet, but those were provided to you on August 16th via email. So if you could just state your name, and if you did receive those and were able to review those for the record, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
I also was. Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and then that's all I have for a staff report.
All right, very good. So our applicant, and you're not, I don't think you're Shirley, if you could state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mr. Shirley Anderson.
All right.
John Anderson.
Thank you.
44281 County Road 19. I'm just right on the property.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Anything you'd like to add to the staff report?
No, I think you did a fine job. I wasn't aware of the conditions. I mean, if your grand's kind of been spearheading this, and he's on vacation this week, so I don't know. Are there anything I need to be concerned about, or I would assume not, if he okayed it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I could just go through those quick, just so the representative here understands, too. So the staff recommendations in the packet are the following two items. So one, the owner shall construct all proposed improvements according to plans and specification and guidelines submitted with the application unless otherwise approved by the Environmental Services Department. And then number two is the owner shall contact the Environmental Services Department within three days of construction completion, so post-construction inspection may be completed.
That's no problem. Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. And nothing you said you wanted to add to that, right?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
Very good. Any questions by members for the applicant or for staff?
Mr. Chairman, not on this issue. The Andersons have been there for a long time, and they operate a lot of different sites, and one minor issue, I mean, they know how to do this. The, I've asked this a couple months ago, and I got the answer, and I can't remember now. The Wentland property is doing something similar to this, straight north of Painesville on the detour. We all drive by it if you drive on the detour. Now, that never came before us, and there was no notice, neighbors or anything. Remind me what the difference of the two were. That's an enclosed, you know which one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
What's the difference between that one that we never saw anything, nobody was noticed on, and this one?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Bertram, so to answer that question is, that one, too, is in my work area. And so that one was a request for less than 700 animal units. And so that really is the difference between. And so that, that really is the difference between this site and the Wentland site known as Double Downs, is the animal unit difference. So when you're asking for 700 more animal units in an egg district, that's what initiates the conditional use permit process and request. So that's why this one you're seeing in front of you and the Wentland one, you did not, because it was for less than 700. It had nothing to do with this being an outdoor basin or that one being under barns to your basin request. So it was really the animal units that was the difference.
Got it.
Yep, yep, and it was over 500 animal units. So, all across the board, same thing with this request, is they do have to do, which is required by the state for their feedlot permit application, they do have to put in what they call a good neighbor notice, which is a one-time running in your local paper just expressing what your current facility is, what's your proposal, and then what's your final animal unit's going to be. So Wentlands had to do that and Andersons also, but that is a requirement from the feedlot permit side of it. So that's a little bit separate from the 700 animal units that triggers the CUP. So, the public would have been notified via the paper for both of these requests. The difference for the CUP is the 700 animal unit. So hopefully that answers your question.
And did the, did the neighbors receive a notice on this?
They would have, so we do a mailing for this...
A mailing.
Yeah, we do the mailing for this CUP request, but then the neighbors, those that are receiving circulation via the paper would have seen their good neighbor notice also in the paper, so.
Sure, and I'm not sure if it's a good way or a bad way, Mr. Chairman, but on the Wentland one, that was in the paper like a year before it happened, and I'm not, there's no issue with that one either, but similar situations, that's why I wanted to know. But the neighbors knew nothing about it, because of course, people don't get papers anymore. Ignorance of law is no excuse, but everybody was just really curious, like what's going on, and nobody received the notice. It was in the paper, I found out, but it was like a year earlier or something, whatever. But I'm just, was trying to draw the comparisons to the two and you explained it, so thank you.
Yeah, and for that Wentland one, they actually had to redo their notice this spring again, and then they had to redo it a second time. So it actually was in the paper three times, because basically what they're putting in the paper has to match what's in their application, and any adjustments that you make could also trigger needing to do another public notice, so that one would have been actually from the year prior would have been in there, and then two more times also. So, by the time that we issued the permit, so.
Mr. Chair, I've never understood this one from the start, because they're not adding animals or subtracting. All they're doing is putting up a big tank to wash their trucks and have the washwater into and not run out onto the land, so it's nothing but a good for everybody concerned. And...
Yeah, and my understanding, it is, it's just the size of it and the way the ordinance calls, and, yep, I, maybe that's, I know we're looking at an ordinance, maybe there's a way to change the language. Ken, and you are the person to come up with that.
I'll buy mine out of here.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we should consider a condition that we make Mr. Anderson count the cattle every day and then report to us that it's 846 or less. That would keep him out of trouble.
I'll let you make that condition.
If they were sheep, he might fall asleep.
Oh.
That's a good one.
Wow. All right, any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, with that, we'll move to the public hearing. Is anyone here from the public on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to closed public hearing.
All right, thank you. Jeff, second?
Jason Wiederman, second.
Thank you, Jason. Jason, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing closed. Any further discussion on this one, or findings of fact? Hearing done. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the Stearns County Zoning Ordinance Number 439? Please specify all performance standards that apply.
Mr. Chairman, try to keep up with Jason. I'm going to try to do this as good as he did it. Let me see if I can do it.
Lot of pressure.
Sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, 9.3.
Well executed, thank you. All right. Two, is there environmental assessment worksheets on EAW, environmental impact statement, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, state disposal system, or other permit required for this facility? And Bethy Jo stated earlier that there is not one required for this application. Number three, does a proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive land use plan? Please specify the appropriate sections.
Mr. Chairman, under the...
Going to go egg pillar?
Egg. I got them marked under the egg. Number four, the strive for and improve higher farm profitability and farm, family farm stability under agricultural use policies. Number two, emphasize the importance of animal agriculture to the county economy under animal agriculture policies. I'm trying to mix it up here in the areas.
You've got a lot of options, you're doing well.
Number one, allow animal feedlots in the agricultural areas by protecting them from non-farm housing through county zoning.
You did a good job, and there was more that would have applied, so that was really good. All right, number four, will the site configuration, number and type of animals at the site and prevailing wind conditions impact any of the following areas? Traffic, public safety, schools, parks, churches, other municipal or residential areas, or any other impacts?
No.
All right. Have a no. If anyone feels differently, chime in quick. Otherwise, we're going to number five. Has information been provided regarding the impact to property values in the area as a result of the proposal, and those were not discussed? All right, number six, have all recommendations from the feedlot review committee and feedlot staff been reviewed?
Yes.
That is a yes. So then, number seven, any other issues pertinent to the matter? Please specify.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to the county board on August 23rd.
All right, with the two conditions, all right. Motion by Jeff, do you have a second?
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Motion by Jeff, second by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to recommend approval. Thank you very much.
John, good to see you. Have things been going well in the farm?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Any thoughts of coming back to us about an expansion similar to we talked about a couple of years ago?
We're looking at a different county.
Okay. A different location, then?
Uh, we're, you know, we have some plans.
Okay.
Our farm has expanded in different ways, and we've, we've added hogs, but in different parts of the state.
Okay. All right, well, I wish you luck and I appreciate the operation you do have, so...
Oh, yeah, no problem. We are the ones hanging out of the bag, but we will be back in a few months, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so agenda...
One quick thing, if I could just give Jeff a teachable moment here. The lady that was here before Hobby Farms, it's great to have Hobby Farms coming back and that. The thing that scares me from a little bit larger producer perspective is like African swine fever and some of these other, other diseases, foreign animal diseases that could really raise havoc with our, with our industry. You know, she's a good person, I'm sure she's fine, but she probably doesn't understand the importance of biosecurity and premise IDs and a lot of that. You know, so I don't know if this probably isn't the right forum to educate, but just so people are aware that there's a lot more to raising hogs than just throwing feed out at them. And, you know, keeping everything healthy is very important, so, thank you.
Point, yeah, thanks.
Actually, a question, Bethy, is there anything related to biosecurity in the ordinance or permits?
No, the only thing that... Mr. Chair, members of the board, so really the only thing that is really kind of outlined in the ordinance and regarding to biosecurity is that when we are attending site inspections or site visits, you're making contact with the persons to see what type of biosecurity requirements are for the site, other than usually typically what we have is boot covers, different types of like Lysol, Tectrel-type kind of sprays as well, obviously limiting your exposure to the animals, seeing what you need to see to be making a compliance and determination, but obviously not wandering around petting everything either. And then cleaning before you would go to another site visit, but a lot of times too with, it's kind of pretty, it happens occasionally where you may have more than one site visit in a day, but typically when you're going to production facilities, that's kind of a one visit and done for the day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so agenda on item number five, I know we have Steve Leggett, and I hope I pronounced that correctly, with us virtually here. And that's, number five is to consider a request submitted by Steve to amend section 10.2.12C of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439 related to controlled accesses in the Shoreland Overlay District. And really what we're trying to do tonight as a planning commission is really, either come to a consensus or just make a general recommendation. We're not going to be doing any kind of a formal roll call on this. It's just as a planning commission, what are we either going to recommend or completely agree upon to go on to the board? So, with that, I'll turn it over to, there is Steve, we see you, thank you, and I'll direct maybe to you, Jennifer, if you're, just to kind of lay this out.
Yep, yep, very good. So, we have a request to make a change to the zoning ordinance. We don't get these real often from landowners in the county, but the ordinance does provide a process and procedure, so if somebody wants to seek a change to the text of the ordinance, the ordinance states that it would be referred to the planning commission for review and recommendation, and then the ordinance states that the public hearing would be held by the county board. So, again, that's why we're here tonight, as Jason mentioned. So, the requested change relates to lots in shoreline that would serve as a controlled access. Currently, the zoning ordinance prohibits lots for controlled accesses to a water body. And the request that Steve is making is to allow limited use of controlled access lots. So, as the ordinance states here, what his requested text addition would be, would state that we would leave the ordinance as it is, controlled access slots are not allowed, and then the addition would be, this provision shall not apply if the controlled access lot is allowed as part of a subdivision approval and outlined in the subdivision agreement for a residential subdivision. The controlled access lot is to be used solely for the lot owners within the subdivision. Further, the access shall only be used for low-impact activities such as walking trails, shore fishing, and picnic areas. One dock or fishing pier shall be allowed. No mooring is allowed. That would mean no docking, no hooking up watercraft to a dock. And then one structure may be allowed, not to exceed 150 square feet. Just to back up one step, I should have said this earlier. You may remember Steve was before the planning commission a few months ago with a proposed plat on the Mississippi River, four lots. That plat has been recorded. He may be coming in the future with another expansion. So, he has a project that would utilize this if the ordinance is changed, but keep in mind, this changes the ordinance for the whole county, so we're looking at it on a countywide basis, not just specifically for this project. So, the proposed addition is outlined there, it's underlined in your staff report that you see. When I reviewed the Minnesota rules that relate to shoreline regulations, they, so state rule allows for controlled access slots, and then they have these requirements. So, I realized that we need to add a little bit more than just the underlying text. So that's what is at the bottom of page one of your staff report, and then top of page two, so those items one, two, and three. So I'm just going to summarize them quick. The additions we would also request be added if the county ends up adding this in the ordinance. Number one, the lot must meet the minimum size requirement for a residential lot, kind of makes sense. Number two, the lot must be jointly owned by all purchasers of lots in the subdivision, or all purchasers of non-repairing lots in the subdivision who are provided access. That means if you've got 10 lots, every lot would have a 1/10th interest in this access lot. And then number three talks about how we should have covenants or other effective measures that specify what can happen in this controlled access lot. So we envision that that would be addressed in our subdivision agreement. And it goes on to explain in detail what kind of things would be addressed in there. So then I did cite some comprehensive plan goals there that you can, you know, discuss if, if you want, whether they comply. And again, make a recommendation or just have some discussion for the board's consideration. We have this on their agenda for next week to set a hearing, and then the hearing would be end of September.
All right, very good. Real quick question, well, and Steve, you know what, in fairness with the recommendation, anything you'd like to add to what Jennifer has shared?
Oh, we can't hear you, Steve.
We still don't have anything. Steve?
How about now?
Now we're good. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I guess just a little bit more backdrop to this. Yeah, you know, this came to light with our recent, you know, concept and designing of the majestic rivers on the Mississippi River. And it was unique in the sense that we had a large outlot of nature that we wanted to utilize, or the thought process was to be able to utilize it for basically private walking trails. And the fact that it was on the waterfront came to light, the staff pointed out that this ordinance, ordinance existed that would not allow the people to utilize or have access to the water. So I think it was my understanding that, and Jen or staff can correct that, but we couldn't make the walking trails, but because of the ordinance, they literally couldn't cast a line into the water to go fishing, or push their canoe into the water, or whatever it may be. So, it seemed like this existing ordinance is a very blanketed, very restrictive ordinance. And I believe, if I remember right, again, staff may correct me on this, but that it may have been put into place more so to protect waterways from someone creating an access point that anybody could potentially come and use. Again, our goal or our objective here is to have it specifically set up where the residents of the adjacent development would be the only parties that could go and utilize that. At first, we thought, okay, it's going to be only the lots that aren't on the water that maybe could go down and utilize that, but again, we want to have it more of a common walking area. If friends of friends from one lot to the other want to go for a walk, ride their bike, they want to go down, cast a line in the water down there. Again, we, we feel that the ordinance is way over restrictive in that we have a great opportunity to not only take advantage of the land down there, but the waterfront resources for these residents to be able to harness. Again, specifically whether it be fishing, swimming, you know, sliding their canoe or their kayak into the water, their paddleboard, you know, we have upwards, it's over an eighth-mile stretch there, and it seems that it would be a shame that people could walk by this waterfront, but they couldn't utilize it. So again, we're asking for this change or modification to the ordinance to be less restrictive and give the ability in certain instances, much like this, which again is fairly unique, there's probably not a lot of large developments and water fronts that have been going on, but again, we see, you know, a use here that we should not allow to be overlooked. So, with that, I'll open myself up for any questions relative to that.
All right, thanks, Steve. Initially, any comments, questions by members?
Well, for staff, in Pearl Lake, they have an area park, like on the northwest corner, that's owned by, I don't know what, six or seven property owners, but they're not, none of them have property on the lake. Would this be kind of similar? There's a dock there and just an area for them to, like a park area.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, yes, it would be similar. Yep. Now, this plat, this development will have 15, 14 riparian lots on the river and then some backlots. As Steve mentioned, all the lots would have use of this space if the ordinance has changed. But yeah, that's a great example.
But those, none of those are on the water.
Right.
This here would be, everybody be included, right?
That's, that's the proposal. Now, the way the ordinance would be drafted, they could do it that way, or they could Now, the way the ordinance would be drafted, they could do it that way, or they could just choose to make it for the non-riparian owners. But the ordinance as proposed would allow either scenario, yep.
So what's Pearl Lake, Mr. Chairman, was Pearl Lake grandfathered in somehow, or how were they allowed to do that?
I know the lot you're referring to, but I don't know the history of how that came to be. I do know, when I started at the county 22 years ago, controlled access lots were allowed. Shortly after I started, we had a plat proposed in the county with an access lot that was very controversial, so then the county board changed the ordinance, and they've been prohibited for 18, 20 years.
I guess they get along there, everybody has to take their turns mowing the grass, and...
Well, my guess is the intention of that, I can understand, I mean, if you're going to do developments and you retain one lot, and everybody puts their dock section on one particular lot, and now you create, you know, conflicts for the water, that can become a mess. I can see where the ordinance is in place to prevent those kind of situations.
Mr. Chair, I got several questions, and one of them relates to that, and the ordinance was put in place, but yet we don't have the rationale why the ordinance was put in place. We, I mean, we could have, it would be nice to see the minutes from that meeting and the rationale why that ordinance was put in place, because all of a sudden, now we have a request to get rid of the ordinance. Well, how do we just negate, well, we got a request to get rid of that ordinance? Likewise, if we're going to do that too, typically whenever we have something going to the board, we allow the public to have some type of input with us before we make a recommendation. We haven't heard from anybody about the topic at all, and it's kind of tough for us to make a recommendation if we haven't heard anybody else's opinion about that.
Yeah. Would this go to the county board on the 23rd meeting, or it'd be for a future meeting?
To set a public hearing.
But just to set the public hearing, okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, this is different than any other condition use permit plat, where the ordinance specifically says the hearing is held by the board.
Right. And I'm curious about this procedure, because I haven't seen it done in my, you know, experience between the city and the county. Have we done something like this before?
We have, yes, Mr. Chair, we, Commissioner Persky, we've had eight or 10 of them in the time I've been at the county, so, like I said, it's not often, but it has happened, yep.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. Is there any place in the county ordinance code rulebook that defines low-impact activities?
I didn't hear that last part, Jason, low impact?
So he, in this ordinance, it calls for low-impact activities, such as.
Yep.
I'm concerned that such as leads it up to interpretation. So me having a heavy metal rock concert on my common access could be a low-impact activity.
Yeah.
The neighbors may not agree with that.
Yeah, currently, there's not a definition for low-impact. What I, what we did find in the Minnesota rule, which is that number three on page two, so the state language says, like, right in the middle of the sentence that starts with examples, "Examples of non-significant conflict activities include swimming, sunbathing, or picnicking." So I think that was the state's way to describe low-impact, non-significant conflict activities. But either way, we don't define that, we just have examples listed here.
And then the second question, it says, "Used solely by the lot owners of that subdivision." If we read that language as written, if I bring friends up, they would not be allowed to use the controlled access, correct? Or if I rent my house out as a VRBO, would the renters then have controlled access, or would that relate to the non-owners?
I think the way it's written, it's, you will use it with your friends or whatever, yeah, you don't invite, like you said, 500 to your rock concert, but...
I, I just, I mean, based on the VRBO discussions, if we have a controlled access and we modify the ordinance, and somebody comes in from the VRBO request, this will be brought up. I don't want those people wandering my controlled access.
Mr. Chair?
And I agree with the vagueness of picnic, what's the difference between a picnic and a party? I could picnic with my family, with three or four people, but I could also, you know, party with 30 friends down on the river as well.
Is it the, Mr. Chairman, Jennifer, is it the dock, or is it the entire lot?
It's the entire lot that would be subject to.
Because not really, you're not supposed to have motorized boats or anything there, right? I guess that's kind of getting kind of picky, but...
You could drive them in, the way I would read this, but you can't, you can't keep them docked.
No, you can't keep them docked, yeah.
Yeah, it says no mooring.
The, yeah, and the language also states, oh, where is that? That you wouldn't have boat launching facilities there. Gosh, where does it say that?
So you have a dock, but you don't have a landing or anything?
Oh, yeah. Oh, the activities may include non-motorized launching of watercraft, so if you want to carry a canoe or a kayak, but yeah, not a motorized.
Steve mentioned a kayak or something launching it. Now, when we say it's not allowed, the DNR could do this, then it would be okay.
For sure.
And the county parks probably could do this, and then it would be okay. So when we say that it can't be done, it can be done, but just not by
Private.
Private people. But, and now we hear that it is being done on Pearl Lake. Could we make the ordinance, do we have to change the ordinance, or could we allow this per situation that would control it to some degree? Getting to Jason's point, that do we have to change the entire ordinance for everybody, or could we make it specific approval on a case-by-case basis?
Yep, good question. The ordinance change is needed, because otherwise it's prohibited. So there does need to be a change in the ordinance that would allow them to even ask for it, and then, it's not an automatic thing, that would be part of their request when they're going through the plat process, so you'd have the opportunity to firm up the language in the subdivision agreement, to specify, like it says here, "Covenants or other equally effective instrument must be developed to specify which lot owners have the authority to use it and which activities are allowed." So that would happen every time somebody wanted to do one of these.
So it is kind of like a case-by-case basis then, and the reason I ask that is, with the kind of development that this is going to be, I think some of the concerns that we could have certainly would be eliminated, because those activities probably aren't going to happen in a neighborhood like this, where they'd be more prone potentially to be in other locations. I mean, your, the neighbors and the mutual landowners wouldn't tolerate it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I'd say that's famous last words.
Mr. Chair, is there any reason why we have to?
I'm not done yet, thank you, Jason.
I mean, is there any reason why we have to make a decision tonight? Could we not table this, I mean, until we get more information on this?
It is tabled to you, Joe. Ultimately, we're making a recommendation to the county board for...
They're going to have a public hearing.
You're going to have a public hearing and a lot more stuff, so this isn't just going to happen with us tonight.
Yeah. But, well, my question would be, are you ready to make a recommend, would you be able to make a recommendation, just with what, I mean, is it worthy to have a recommendation without the knowledge you have about where it's going?
I'll be perfectly honest, I would recommend it in a heartbeat. I think it's a really good change, and I really like the additional conditions that are applied to it. To me, it's, I like your idea of what was the logic behind putting the ordinance in place in the first place, I think that's some additional research that can be done, but it seems like a really common sense way to just open up a few more options. And I think there are concerns, which is why I like number three of the recommendations so well, because it allows each property to, you know, kind of be assessed for things like, you know, rock concerts, or whatever kind of activities may or may not be conducive to that, that particular parcel. That, that's an opinion one.
And then, would the, who would be responsible for monitoring this? Well, every one of these communities, they have covenants, they have all of these agreements, they have a housing association president or whatever, and these are things that would work themselves out with the group.
Mr. Chair, I think Steve would have something to say.
Oh, Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, well, yeah, and to touch upon that, yes, we would plan to have an HOA, as part of the HOA agreement, some annualized fees set aside for any upkeep or maintenance. And I just, and I guess I want to clarify too, obviously, we're not looking to abolish the existing ordinance, we're simply asking to put an addendum to it, so with, you know, be able to open up some options. And Jen, maybe to clarify as well, we, we could still do a, a common area, it's really that the ordinance only restricts the usage of the waterfront or waterfront access, is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Steve, the ordinance doesn't prohibit a common lot that the lot owners could share, it just couldn't be part of, it couldn't touch the river, the lot would have to be off the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think in number three, the first sentence helps a lot, so covenants, so this is of the recommendations, number three, "Covenants or other equally effective legal instruments must be developed that specify which lot owners have authority to use the access lot and what activities are allowed." So what it basically is saying, all the things that we're bringing up as concerns don't need to be the concerns of the county. That concern goes on to whoever the property owners are, and however they decide to determine that.
When they move in and they have their covenant, or whatever they, they know what their rules are they got to live by.
Yep. Yeah, and that would have to be established through the plating process.
And a dock, if it's 100 feet, 150 square feet, unless I'm missing something, it'd be five by 30, or four by 38, I mean, you're not talking a
Yeah.
100-foot dock.
Mr. Chair, yeah, Steve, I'm a little bit confused, are you talking about a dock and a building down there? I see it's a 150-foot square foot building, is that correct?
Well, yeah, actually, and again, just to be, you know, while I was instrumental on some of the verbiage that you're seeing in the proposal, I did work hand-in-hand with staff, meaning Angie and Jennifer, in regards to how this was written, so this was not solely my, you know, penmanship here. And so I'll defer to Jen, but my understanding is, is the 150 square foot is the county ordinance, which would allow us, like any other waterfront lot, to have an accessory shed on this lot, that, again, that the common area could utilize, whether they put emergency life jackets in, or lifesaving device, or whatever picnic elements, that's an actual accessory shed. The dock itself, it'd be a single dock, and the dock would be governed under by, I believe under the DNR guidelines, governs how long the dock can be, how big it can be, things of that nature. So we'd, we'd still fall under all the same guidelines that any other waterfront lot would fall under. And Jen, maybe correct me, or back me up on that, so...
Yeah, that's accurate, yep.
So based on my experience with public accesses, this is not a public access, but it's something similar to it, I am concerned if we open this up, we are opening a substantial area of conflict in these subdivisions. I think it's optimistic to think the covenants and the deeds are going to solve everything, but what we have told folks regarding VRBOs and other things is, if you have a problem, call the sheriff. And there are people here who are going to say, I have a problem with so-and-so using this, or this, their use is inappropriate, and this kind of communal ownership, particularly of an access, a controlled access, I think is going to cause substantial conflict in many areas.
And Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, I don't think it's a big deal, I think it makes sense to do it. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, if the DNR can do it, and the county can do it, and Pearl Lake can do it, I don't know why we wouldn't allow it here.
Mr. Chair, there is a big difference between the county and the, and the DNR, and that is that they open it up to the public, and they have standards by which they construct. This, this would not be open to the public, this would be privately used. Another question, Steve, was there going to be any parking available, so how would people then, if they were bringing a canoe there, how would they get that canoe over to the access?
Joe, that's not what's on the agenda tonight, though. I mean, this isn't actually something like, this isn't something that's going to get approved like a conditional use permit or anything, this is just something, do we want to make a recommendation that the planning commission is, you know, supports this language change, or, or not, basically? And do we 100% agree, or do we not? We're not going to do a motion either way on it, but, you know, I think Jason's expressing some concerns, so I would say having a consensus, we may not, we may not be unanimous in that tonight, because he's got to have some concerns. I don't have as many concerns, doesn't sound like Jeff has as many concerns. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to give, you brought up, I think, Pearl Lake, I don't know of any specific, in Stearns County, I can tell you, across the river in Benton County, not, probably more than a mile is the crow flies from where our development is, is a development called Ferry Point, and they have a, a community access point as well. It's been in place for decades upon decades with great success. They actually have a full-blown boat landing, but again, it's, it's structured that it's part ownership by all the, all the residents within, and it's, you know, I know a lot of people that live in there, I've built houses in there for people, everybody is very happy with that shared access, and it's a, it's a screaming success. So I think you find that homeowners, the HOA, want it to be a success, and again, if it's, you know, professionally done and outlined, there should be no problems, and there's, there's no reason it can't be duplication of what they did in Ferry Point, so that's it.
Thanks, Steve. Any other, so...
My, my, my comment is, there must have been a good reason why, years ago, they implemented that. It would be kind of interesting to know what their reasoning was before we go and flip-flop and changing it again, and then all of a sudden, oh, there was a reason, and...
Well, a very good point, I appreciate that, and I want to make sure I'm clear, we wouldn't be getting rid of that ordinance, we're just adding basically some additional options. So to that point, what was the initial, and I...
Mr. Chair, I can give you a brief summary if you want.
Yeah, that'd be good, Jen.
We had a proposed plat on Piers Lake, and Piers Lake doesn't have a public access currently, so when there was a proposal to have a controlled access lot, it was just going to be for the owners in this development, so it wasn't a wide-open, you know, public access, but the, you know, other landowners on the lake didn't like the idea of having non-riparian people being able to get to the lake and have access that way. So there's a lot of opposition in, when that development was proposed, and the development, either they withdrew or it got denied, I don't remember, but then shortly thereafter that the board did change the ordinance to prohibit the controlled access lots. I did pull up the one on Pearl Lake that you were mentioning, Ken, and that was recorded in 86, so it's older, but there is a, there's some covenants that go along with it that talk about, you know, a little bit of the rules, it's not much, it's two pages, but that was an older one. We have one, Lakes of Fairhaven, which is down in Fairhaven Township, that has a controlled access lot, but it's probably been 18, 20 years since it's been out of the ordinance, and it was due to that proposed development.
Mr. Chairman, Jennifer, was that the Lang addition on Piers Lake?
I think it...
I'm just trying to
It was on the north, north side, north and west, I think it would have been.
And then it was scaled down, is what happened.
Yeah.
I think that was Lang.
I think so.
You know, I, I can think of property like on the horseshoe chain of lakes right now, that if, if you didn't have the ordinance in place, you could take a lot of acreage, have the whole thing plotted residential, you would have a lot you designate to the side, and that would, where people could put their docks up, because it's a shared access, and you could have an incredible amount of docks and slips, you could sell all those properties for dramatically more money, because they all have lake access with docks and everything. And I, that's tough on lakeshore, because now you've just taken a section of lake and put 20 houses... and, and put twenty houses worth of docks on one little section. And I, I'm sure that was the problem with, with Piers Lake, and I could see that. This ordinance is good to prevent that issue, uh, in my opinion. Now, the unintended consequences of it being that restrictive is kind of what Steve's dealing with right now. And, and there are certainly concerns potentially that come with that too. Jason, I think you've articulated those well. Um, but to me, those, those concerns aren't enough of a trade-off to think that there's, this might not be a really good improvement to the ordinance.
You almost have to have a, a limit on the size of the development, you know, like you're talking, if there's thirty, forty houses, and you want to, everybody wants to have a dock there. That's a little ridiculous if you have six or seven or eight or ten, and they share it and they have one dock or maybe two.
Right.
A little more controllable.
Which is what this states right now, the addition would limit it.
I like it. And I think it addresses a lot of those things. Um, and, and, and what a great selling point, and it's almost like, uh, Parkland dedications. And if you're putting a park and a recreational area in your neighborhood for those people, um, as opposed to all of those docks and boat slips, give them something and some way to use it. I, I, I think it's wonderful, and, and what a, a great selling point for, for the development, too.
That's pretty much exactly what the Pearl Lake thing is. It's, the kids can go down there and play football, or with softball, or whatever. And they have a place to play, because the yards are all too small to play in, so they have a private park.
Okay. Um, did I miss anyone? Any other comments? And, and then what I would summarize, I guess, to the county board then, was that, for the most part, it sounds like it's a recommendation from the planning commission with some concerns. It's certainly not, uh, uh, unanimous, uh, deal, Jason, expressed some concerns. So probably some things to explore this, the public hearing. And Joe, you have some concerns, things for you guys to talk about. But overall, maybe a recommendation from the planning commission to look into it. Is that fair? All right.
I think, uh...
Anything else you need?
We're good, Steve?
Steve, are, are you good on your end?
Uh, no, uh, again, I appreciate, uh, looking at this, uh, exactly what you mentioned. You know, I think by adding this verbiage, making it less restrictive, and looking at it on an individualized basis, makes all the sense in the world. Um, you know, we have upwards of ten acres and over an eighth mile of waterfront that can be utilized. Um, and not just for walking trails, again, but to be able to have the kids out fishing, putting their canoes in, whatever it may be. Um, it, it seems like it's a, it's a no-brainer to come up with a, some change to the verbiage that will allow this on a case-by-case versus a blanketed ordinance that restricts everything. So again, thank you for, uh, considering it, and we hope that we can get it passed in some form, so.
Good. All right, Dave, thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks, Steve.
Very good. All right, so then that would take us to our last agenda item, and that's just, uh, approval of minutes.
With the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Jeff, do you have a second?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a clarification on the minutes. Uh, I think Commissioner Lenzemeyer was here, was he not?
He was.
That wasn't mentioned, I believe, in the, in the.
Good, good catch.
He was.
He, he was watching us.
Lie the whole time. Until somebody asked him, "What do you think?" And then that took a while.
He did share his opinion, then.
Yes, he did.
All right.
Not that I don't.
Haven't noticed, Joe. That's all right. Uh, all right, do we have a second to Joe's motion? Oh, thank you, everybody. Um, I've got Sean or Ken, so, um, we'll call it Sean. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes approved. And with that, um, thank you, Sean. Motion made to adjourn, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, aye. Thank you. Nice job, everyone. Good night.